Good evening, and welcome to the business meeting of June 16. We are reconvening our business meeting following an executive session for the matters of two matters of employment history of particular persons. I would like you to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the agenda items if anybody wants to. No? Okay. We'll move on. I'd like to -- a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Resolved to approve the agenda items 2 through 16 as contained in the consent agenda for this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
The agenda items on the consent agenda tonight are approval of minutes for June 2, CSE/CPSE placements, we're amending the 2022 summer ESY staff, we're approving various unpaid days for various staff members, we're approving additional work hours for various staff members, we're approving an overnight trip that already took place for athletes that were competing in the New York State Track and Field Qualifier and Championships, which took place on June 10th and 11th, we're appointing Dan Mahoney as the Board of Education Meeting Videographer for the school year coming up, we're approving a health and welfare contract with New Rochelle, we're approving the 2022 summer workers, we're approving the 2022 kinder camp program and staff, we're authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into employment agreements with contractual employees that do not belong to unions, we're accepting two donations, one of which was an anonymous donation and another one is in the amount of $5,274.19, which is being deposited into a scholarship fund that you're approving in this agenda as well for the special purpose fund in memory of Elias Knapp, we're approving district-wide sustainability coordinators for this current school year, and we're approving the spring 2022 postseason stipends.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellino. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. So, it's exciting, we're going to start this night with recognition.
It's a happy night.
It's a happy night.
All right. So, before us this evening, we have both an exceptional employee and an exceptional student that we want to recognize. So, I would like to invite up Mr. Cantzowicz to the mic, who's going to speak a little bit about Ms. Naya, who's not at all embarrassed right now.
All right. For those of you that don't know, Naya was our state champion in the 100-meter dash for this year's New York State Public High School Athletic Association Track and Field Championships. She was also a bronze medalist in the 200-meter dash. Now, Naya, in case nobody's told you yet, we're all very proud of you, in case you didn't know yet. So, it's been a pleasure to watch you accomplish your goals and meet your dreams during your senior year, and I'm so excited for the future that you have ahead of you. I know that you're going to face it with the same intensity and passion that I got to see here at Putnam Valley. One of the first conversations Naya and I had, I don't know if you remember this, but we were in the Wellness Center, you were doing your fitness testing for PE, and I asked you what your college and athletic plans were, and you responded immediately, before you could even take a breath, she said, "I'm going to get a scholarship to an HBCU, and I'm going to cheerlead." And for those of you that don't know, that's check and check, those are both done. We have those. So, I had heard through the grapevine that Naya was also an exceptional track runner, so I had to ask. I said, "What about track and field?" And she said, "Yeah, I like track, I like running." She said, "I'm hoping that I qualify for states in the 100-meter and the 200-meter." Again, for those keeping score, that's four massive goals. Massive. They're four truly massive accomplishments. She got her scholarship, she got into the college she wanted, she committed to play the sport that she loves in college, and then she medaled at the state level in a very deep and highly competitive field. In the 10 months that I've known Naya now, I've watched her accomplish all of this while maintaining such a positive attitude, such great grades, and just really being truly involved and immersed in the school community. She's really embodied the student athlete, and it's been a pleasure to get to know you and get to watch you perform and to watch you succeed. And, you know, I wish you nothing but the best, I know you're going to be nothing but the best, but before I let you go tonight and stop embarrassing you, I'm going to have Coach Rush come up from our track team, he's going to give a couple of words about Naya and her outstanding track season, but also some special words from Coach Wilson, who's had the pleasure of coaching Naya for the past several years as a cheerleader who unfortunately couldn't be here today. But, Naya, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything that you have done, it's been a pleasure getting to know you and a pleasure watching you compete. I'm going to turn it over now to Coach Rush. Thank you.
So, Naya, this is from Coach Albano, Coach Wilson, and myself that we wrote together. "Naya Given is one of the hardest-working student athletes from Putnam Valley High School. Most importantly, not only does she excel in athletics, but she also excels in the classroom and in the performing arts, including band, chorus, and on the stage. Her most recent stage production was Camila Rosario in PVHS Theater Works Production of In the Heights, the Spring. Alton times, as evidence of her dedication and work ethic, Naya would be seen entering the high school at 7:00 AM in the morning and not leaving until 10:00 PM at night. Naya is a three-season varsity athlete in volleyball, cheerleading, and track and field. For volleyball, Naya earned two varsity letters. For cheerleading, Naya earned eight varsity letters and qualified for states four times. Additionally, she was a part of the cheer team when they placed third in the 2020 Nationals in Dallas, Texas. As a cheerleader, she earned all league and all section titles for seven years. In her senior year this past winter, she earned the top spot and a scholarship. For track and field, Naya earned five varsity letters and qualified for states three times. The other two years, she could qualify for states as a varsity track athlete were lost due to the COVID pandemic. As a track athlete, she has earned all league and all section four years in a row. Additionally, she qualified for Track and Field Nationals in 2019 in the 100-meter dash and as a member of the Sprint Medley Relay Team. Most recently, in the coming spring of 2022 season, she is New York State's state champion in the 100-meter dash and also placed third in the 200-meter dash. As the state's 100-meter dash champion, she qualified for the 2022 Nationals Championship. Earning a full four-year scholarship, Naya will be attending Spelman University in Atlanta, Georgia this autumn. Naya is a kind soul both on and off the field, willing to go that extra mile to help someone else succeed. As a role model to the younger children in the school district, we hope that the state's standoff parade and the state's champion victory lap walkthrough at all three schools in the district show these young students, especially the young females, that not only can they dream to be champions, but they can also fulfill and achieve those dreams, just as Naya has done here in Putnam Valley. Naya will be truly missed, as she sure did leave a mark here at Putnam Valley High School. As with all of our graduating seniors, we are excited to watch Naya grow as a young, successful adult, and we cannot wait to see what she will accomplish in her bright future. Congratulations, Naya."
All right. I know that's all hard to top, but I'm not sure you're quite embarrassed enough yet, so I'm going to say a few words. I truly believe that Naya embodies what it means to be a well-rounded student. She's talented in so many ways, academically, athletically, and as we learned more recently, artistically. She is kind, caring, and compassionate student and friend. And my little inside joke with Naya is I always ask her what she ran last, and then I'll just start taking tenths of seconds off it. So, I was so excited, I've been harassing her, telling her she had to run 12 flat and win, and then I heard she ran 12.06 in the qualifier, and I was like, "Oh, she totally got it." So, as impressive as a feat it was to win the 100 meters, when I finally had a chance to pass the cross at the elementary school, and she gave me a big hug, and the first thing she said to me was she apologized for not running 12 flat. So, I give you a pass, we're all very proud of you. I'm not sure, I'm going to do some research, I'm going to research the last time the fastest 100-meter winner did not go to college to run, but, well, I'll let you know what I figure out, but I know you will go on and do great things and continue to make us all proud. So, one more round of applause for Miss Naya.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone in the district for --
You're talking, you have to talk into the microphone.
I just want to thank everyone for all the support I've received over the last six years of being a student athlete, and it's been a really beautiful experience, I feel really supported, and I'm just very thankful and blessed for everything I've been able to receive. Thank you guys so much.
Let her dad take a picture.
And her dad behind you, too.
All right. On to our second. So, now is our opportunity to honor an exceptional employee with our Pride in PV Award, so I'd like to invite up Dr. Podesta.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations, Naya. We really did enjoy having you walk through the elementary hallways. Let's go, Naya! It was great. And so now we're here to celebrate another very special person. Mrs. Patty Barone has been a teacher aide in Putnam Valley Elementary School for 21 years. Throughout those 21 years, she has touched many lives by spreading her help, her kindness, her care, her attention to detail, and her true devotion to this district each and every day. From the early mornings when Patty helps at Children's Center through Parks and Rec, then goes out to help arrival with the buses on the blacktop, whether it be in cold temperatures, rain, maybe some sleet, or maybe some 95-degree humid days, Patty's helping direct the buses, helping the children arrive safely, and then she loves it so much, she goes back in the afternoon to help them get back on the buses. Between those hours, though, Patty is helping in any classroom she's needed, she has spent lots of time in kindergarten and first grade through the years, she's been known to hand out a jelly bean or two just to make the day better, and Patty actually told me that children, as they grow up and go through the district, often say, "Hey, Mrs. Barone, do you have any jelly beans?" She's also quick to put on a hat and be whatever you need. She may be the nurse for half hour, and in that half hour, Patty becomes the nurse. She may be the front office worker, she may be a supervisor, often a chaperone at our school events, and then later in the day, works at Children's Center again. So, her days are long, her hours are devoted to Putnam Valley Elementary School, and because she loves children so much, guess what she does during the summer? She works at a camp, and she works at the Putnam Valley Camp in the early mornings and then later in the day, making sure that the summers are filled with healthy and safe activities for the children. Patty, you are a truly devoted employee. You help with positive communication, you help as a problem solver in the district. It's a problem for us in administration sometimes because too many teachers are requesting you when I only have one of you to go around, and that can be a problem, but it's a good problem to have. When I asked Patty about what she thinks about her job, she said, "Well, it's my life." And she has some other things about her life that she's very proud of, too, especially her daughter Lisa, a school psychologist, her son Anthony, a mechanic, and his lovely wife-to-be. So, Patty, it's obvious you spread your love and kindness and your devotion to hard work and careful work to everyone around you, and people in the district office nearby, they're like, "Is that Mrs. Barone out there again, running the show, helping us stay safe, and just being such a positive person in our whole world?" You have many elementary school people behind you tonight, and more would be here if they didn't have their own obligations in the evening, but I want you to know how supported you are and just how appreciated you are each and every day. Congratulations.
Hi, Patty. I missed that huge smile on my mask. I don't know if I've ever met anyone in my life who loves being around kids more than you do, and is more willing to do whatever needs to be done to support the students at Putnam Valley. I know Dr. Podesta had mentioned that you had covered in the nurse's office for a week, to the point where I was calling you Nurse Patty, and that was after doing Children's Center, greeting the students, and rain. I noticed, you said sleet, I'm pretty sure we would have at least been delayed if it was sleeting. You kept snow out, so we were closed if it was snowing, but honestly, if we could replicate you, our building would run flawlessly 24/7, because sometimes I think you do replicate yourself, because I'll see you on one end of the building, and then 20 seconds later, you'll be coming from the other end of the building, I'm trying to figure out how you meet me there. But I could not be more appreciative of all you do for the students that you love and serve before school, during school, and after school. So, thank you very much. So, I'll read real quickly. This reads, "The Putnam Valley Central School District proudly presents Pride in Putnam Valley to Patty Barone for recognition for outstanding care, service, and dedication she provides to children of our school district. Thank you very much." who recognized one of our Putnam Valley students, Janelle Rio Solzado. So, they actually prepared a quick little video recognition, so we're going to take this opportunity to play this video.
Good evening. This is a great pleasure that I join you to announce this month's DEI and possible questions to Bosse's student representation report. A significant achievement, especially was recognized by our staff for outstanding performance in personal work. I also want to make a humble thank you for your continued support. Value our relationship, mutual commitment, and forward-looking consideration. And now, to this representation, I'm honored to have you become this month's student representation report. Janelle, for this, and I, for the Putnam Valley. How fancy and bold you are to call upon the local high school to come here to share your efforts, and to offer a value to the community. Teachers who value Janelle's eager and active recipes, and a hard worker, never gives up on his contributions towards school, or far beyond the national importance. Of note, her firm hands, and a dutch smile, both a positive and welcome sign. Most important, her heated and sincere, Janelle's commitment, and her checking of the students. Your desire to be a branch of all, and your orders and forth, are very important. Gradually, this is all the most --
So, I'm not sure anyone could beat that smile, but a round of applause for Janelle. All right. So, now for our second presentation this evening, I would like to invite Ms. Levine up. Ms. Levine's going to take us through a process that led to the second reading of the district's DEI policy. This was first shared last June and has really undergone significant revisions over the past year, it's gone through several committees and been viewed by many, and I know Ms. Levine will give us an overview of the changes, some of the highlights, and more so the process in which this policy has gone through over the past 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Left, and good evening, members of the Board of Education and members of our school community. I want to thank you for this opportunity to give an update about our DEI committee and the work we've done over the last year on our policy. Over the year, we met about four times. In those four meetings, we had discussions about the goals of the committee and what we intended to do, and part of those discussions were the goal of updating the policy. A couple of things that we did to really update this policy were to define terms. Sometimes there can be some terms and acronyms, we know education is never short of acronyms, terms and acronyms that may need a little bit more of an agreement on what do we all believe that means. And so, we talked about that, we talked it through, members of the committee gave perspectives and ideas, and we defined a set of terms within the policy to help make sure the policy was clear for everyone. One of the other things we did was we just made sure to eliminate dates in the policy. This work is ongoing, it's never really finished, so to define it to any one particular date or say it's for a particular school year would be incorrect, so we made sure to clarify that it was ongoing work and not defined to one year. Along the way, we had other discussions about really what this policy boils down to, and what it boils down to is that we, as a school community, want to ensure that every student who enters Putnam Valley is welcomed, supported, loved, and receives the same experience from kindergarten through 12th grade of that feeling of belonging. So, essentially, we wanted to make sure our policy reflected our values as a community, reflected the language we felt was important to us, to convey that message, that all students are welcomed and supported here in Putnam Valley. Next year, we'll continue to meet as a committee, we will meet for four times unless the committee agrees that they would like to meet more often than that. We will be inviting new members from our faculty to join the committee as well, and we will continue this great work along with the work of developing trainings, including role-play and scenario trainings, that we will continue to embed within our professional learning for all students, staff, teachers, and the community as a whole. And those are my updates. Any questions?
No, you want to just, because I know people get confused, can you kind of talk about the difference between a policy, which this is, and curriculum work? Because this is not that, you know what I mean?
Correct. The policy is really to ensure that the district as a whole is aware and acknowledges that we are addressing issues that may arise or may be within our community. However, the curriculum is where that actually takes place, that's more of the what and the how, right? This is the why. So, this is why this work is important, it's why it's critical to what we do, and then curriculum is there to make it happen and make sure that we notice that our students see themselves represented in literature, that our students are receiving equitable experiences through the grades and through classrooms. So, that would be the difference, I would say.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can you talk to the input that the students had in this policy?
Input the students had?
The students, yes.
Okay, sure. So, I think at the beginning of the year, I want to say it was September, October, we had surveyed students at the high school and the middle school to get their input on things that they felt were important to them as students and representation, and through that input that we also unpacked with the committee, I believe that was in our November meeting where we looked at that data first, that helped to give us that other lens through which we could look at this policy.
Thank you.
Ms. Bales?
Thank you very much.
What do you think of this work, Dom? As you're leaving us, we don't want you to leave us without saying something.
That's true, that's true. From what I see, it is an extensive policy that covers all different types of differences, regardless of race, sexual orientation, gender, and so forth, and I believe it is a great step in the right direction to be able to represent everyone who needs to be represented and give a voice to those who need a voice. So, I thank you for that. I cannot give specific policy comments, but I believe this is an important document. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a feeling that won't be the last policy discussion you have in your career, just throwing it out there.
I promise you, it will not.
Maybe the first, but it won't be the last.
Okay. So, Student Representatives Report. I'm going back to you, Dominic, you have a report for us?
Your last one, no pressure.
All right, all right.
There's only four people here, but there's 4,000 watching.
Regardless, yesterday was the senior prom, and it was an absolute blast. I loved it, I was dancing all night, and I got to tell you, I'm still a bit sore from all that dancing. It was amazing. It exceeded my expectations greatly. The food was delicious, everyone looked amazing, everyone and their dates, and the night went incredibly smoothly thanks to the staff that were there, the custodians, you know, the faculty from the high school that came, and the jovial spirit of the students. You know, no one let the past three years let us down, so it was an absolutely amazing night, something I'll remember for quite a long time.
We'll talk tomorrow.
Oh, thank you. In addition, the graduation is tomorrow, I still cannot believe I'm saying that, but tomorrow, you know, at the high school, we will have the graduation, and it is going to be an honor to be able to speak on behalf of the students that are there and be able to not only thank the board, but be able to thank the staff, be able to thank the students for all the hard work that they have done. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity. It has been my honor and my pleasure to be able to be here, to give a voice to students, to speak my mind through a complicated and robust year, I'll say that, give you those adjectives.
Have you tapped your replacements yet? Encouraged kids, tell them how much fun it is to be here?
I gave them only good words, but I believe that the high school will be in capable hands, no doubt about it, and I can't wait to go to Binghamton with the lessons I've learned here, and Amanda and Leanne, you know, think the same, they're sad that they aren't able to be here today, but they give their thanks, they say thank you to all of you for participating and for allowing us to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Top that.
I was just going to thank them. No, I wholeheartedly want to thank yourself and the other board reps for taking the time. I know it's busy and studying and homework and everything else going on, but to be here with us in the evenings, because it's important that people hear student perspectives, and it's really the most powerful and most important voice we hear during these meetings are the voices of students. So, I appreciate your willingness to come here and attend, your willingness to speak up as you saw fit, and we all know that you will go on to do great things, and you remember you already promised that you would hire me as your campaign chairperson one day.
I heard your mother took off the requirement that you be president and will settle for senator, is that true?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, she's still expecting you to be president.
It's senator, then president.
Oh, I see, I see. Just as a stepping stone, I got it, I got it.
We can't skip a step like that.
In addition, the graduation is tomorrow. I, I still cannot believe I'm saying that, but tomorrow, you know, at the high school, we will have the graduation, and it is going to be an honor to be able to speak on behalf of the students that are there and be able to not only thank the board, but be able to thank the staff, be able to thank the students for all the hard work that they have done. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity. It has been my honor and my pleasure to be able to be here, to give a voice to students, to speak my mind through a complicated and robust year. I'll say that. Give you those adjectives. And.
Have you tapped your replacements yet? Encouraged kids, tell them how much fun it is to be here?
I, I gave them only good, only good words. But I believe that the high school will be in capable hands, no doubt about it. And I, I can't wait to go to Binghamton with the lessons I've learned here, and Amanda and Leanne, you know, think the same. They're sad that they aren't, that they aren't able to be here today, but they give their thanks. They say thank you to all of you for participating and for allowing us to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Top that.
I was just going to thank them. No, I wholeheartedly want to thank yourself and the other board reps for taking the time. I know it's busy and studying and homework and everything else going on, but to be here with us in the evenings, because it's important that people hear student perspectives, and it's really the most powerful and most important voice we hear during these meetings are the voices of students. So I appreciate your willingness to come here and attend, your willingness to speak up as you saw fit, and we all know that you will go on to do great things. And you remember, you already promised that you would hire me as your campaign chairperson one, one day.
I, I heard your mother took off the requirement that you be president and will settle for senator, is that, is that true?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, she's still expecting you to be president.
It's senator, then president.
Oh, I see, I see. Just as a stepping stone, I got it, I got it.
We can't skip a step like that.
All right, so my report, probably less exciting than Dominic's. We've actually had a couple of school safety meetings that we've previously discussed that have actually taken place. So I had the opportunity to meet with our security consulting company to do sort of an incident debrief, review our policies, procedures, and just really make sure that we are as, in a district in a good place. And it was certainly reaffirmed during that meeting that all of the work we have put in to the security of our schools remains in place, and we remain to be in a very good, as safe as possible, place. So there was really no immediate recommendations, other than to continue all the good work that we are already doing. I had a similar meeting with members of the Putnam County Sheriff's Department, and we spoke about both our current security procedures and policies, as well as some anticipated resources that we hope will be made available through the county in the near future. Just some of the happenings, this is a very busy time of year for many of us. We held a parent feedback workshop, which was well-attended by many of our parents. We reviewed our district vision, mission, and core values. We went through some activities that allowed the parents the opportunity to set those core values that are most important to them, and it's a process that will be repeated for students and staff in the fall. I was able to attend the Hudson Valley Gateway Chamber of Commerce breakfast, where one of our own students, Jane Cheehan, was honored with their scholarship. She was one of several students in the Hudson Valley, honored scholarships, and it was quite an impressive showing, and if I say so myself, quite an impressive student with talents and a, hopefully, a future career in classical music. So I was able to sit with her and her parents and enjoy the atmosphere and hearing about all the terrific students from our region that they honored. Our senior awards ceremony is always an eye-opening experience to see the sheer number of students that are honored and the amounts in which they receive scholarships. Our senior capping gown elementary school walk is a highlight every year. This year took a special twist. Dr. Seppi and Dr. Podesta secretly arranged for kindergarten students to escort the graduating seniors around, which I think maybe even caught them a little bit by surprise. It was pretty interesting to watch. You have like two six-foot-tall seniors going to grab the hand of like a five-year-old who slaps their hands away, it's like, don't touch me. So there were a few objectors, conscientious objectors, I think, but for the most part, the students loved it. I was there cheering them on, saying, this is your time, everybody's going to clap for you. So big smiling faces left. I was quietly whispering to the seniors to make sure they returned with the children they left with, but everyone successfully returned with their assigned kindergartner. It was a terrific event. I know there's been pictures posted online and videos. Obviously, we can't invite everyone in to see it, but I, I sort of wish we could because it's that cool. We spoke a little bit about the prom last night. I did not attend or dance, so I am not sore, thankfully. We had our middle school concerts, our band concerts, fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth, and I'm always in awe of what these students are able to accomplish, how complicated the work is and how well-done it is, so kudos to them as well as their teachers. We held our first Health and Wellness Festival last Friday, so that's a tradition I hope will continue to grow moving forward. Another must-see event, and I apologize to the seniors, I missed your car show. I was pretty sure it was going to pour again, but for the first time ever, it didn't rain. But I was at the kindergarten show, and it's hard to compete with that. So watching the kindergartners stand up there and sing and dance is, again, a must-see education. It was a terrific event, well-attended by parents, parents got the opportunity to visit the students' classrooms, huge smiling faces even on the students. So again, another must-see event. Our education foundation held their annual dinner dance, which I'm sure they wish was more well-attended, but it was in a new venue, it was beautiful, it was great to see people, and I hope enrollment or participation continues to grow moving forward. We had our athletic signing event for our high school seniors who are going on to pursue athletics in college. And I was, I did my end-of-year video inside Putnam Valley Schools with Eric Gross, and we honored our valedictorian and salutatorian, so congratulations to them as well. We are, we're, the list of what was once 36 upcoming events is down to three, thankfully. So we have our elementary field day, which was scheduled now tomorrow. We have our high school graduation, also tomorrow on the turf, 7:00 p.m., and our elementary school and eighth-grade moving-up ceremonies coming up as well. And just a quick reminder, June 23rd and 24th are half-days for elementary and middle school students. Thank you.
Thank you. It is exciting. I guess because you see the result of all the work in the faces of the children. So it doesn't matter what grade or what age, you know, it's just, that's, that's why we do what we do, so. Okay, new business.
Resolved on the recommendation, the superintendent of schools to appoint Allison Gannon to a four-year probationary term as an elementary general education teacher commencing on September 1st, 2022, and terminating August 31st, 2026, the tenure area of elementary is Putnam Valley Elementary School of Step 3 MA with BBFT salary schedule. Ms. Gannon holds childhood education 1 through 6 professional certification. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to recognize that Ms. Gannon is here with us this evening. It's not too often when the elementary school or Dr. Podesta finishes interviewing a candidate where she appears in my office and says, you have to hire her now. And this is one of those occasions. I know that Ms. Gannon impressed throughout the interview process, the committee interview, the screening interview, as well as the demo lesson. She comes to us with many years' experience from the DOE, and we know that she will instantly be a very valuable asset to the students in Putnam Valley, so. You gotta wait for them to vote, and then you gotta come up and shake everyone's hand.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Morgan, you didn't tell her she had to make a speech? Forgot to tell her that? Okay, well, since we didn't warn her, we can't make her do it.
Next time.
Next, next time you come. Number two, please.
Whereas Putnam Valley Central School District, the district, is the sponsor of certain improvements at the Putnam Valley High School, the school involving replacement and repair of the roof, the project, and whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA, as set forth in Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and the requirements of the impending regulations set forth at 6 of New York CRR Part 617, the regulations, the district desires to comply with SECPRA and the regulations which respect to the project. And whereas pursuant to the regulations, the district has considered the project in light of the actions included on the Type 1 list specified in Section 617.4 of the regulations in light of the actions included on the Type 2 list specified in Section 617.5 of the regulations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the project constitutes a Type 2 action as quoted term is defined on the regulations because it falls within the ambit of one or more of the following actions included on the Type 2 list specified in 6 New York CRR, Section 617.5C, 1, 2, and/or 8. Maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes in exiting an existing structure or facility. Number 2 is the replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind, and, I'm losing my spot, and the same site and/or 8. Routine activities of educational institutions, including expansion of existing facilities by less than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. The project is not subject to further review under SECPRA. Number 3, notwithstanding that the project is not subject to further review under SECPRA, the district will continue to comply with guidance issued by the New York State Education Department as applicable. A copy of this resolution should be provided to the New York State Education Department.
Second. Questions or comments?
That's lots of words that really just says that our roof replacement doesn't need a separate environmental study.
And you can blame Paul McCartney and Janine for not being here, for you having to be there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number?
3.
3, please.
Operating Fund Reserves, hold on. Resolve to adjust the following authorized restricted general operating fund reserves as follows pending the annual audit resulting from the 2021-22 remaining unexpected appropriations. Increase the Teacher Retirement System, TRS, District Retirement Contribution Reserve Subfund, GML 6-R2-A, up to 2% of the total compensation of salaries of all teachers employed by the district who are eligible of the TRS paid during the immediately preceding fiscal year, up to $500,000. Increase the Local Employee Retirement System, ERS, Reserve, GML 6-R, up to $500,000 to cover future retirement system contributions, liabilities, and compensation for non-teaching staff. Increase employee benefits and accrued liability reserve, GML 6-P, up to additional $500,000, but no more than an account in total, equal to the liability of all employed accrued benefits due to unemploy upon retirement or termination. Increase the Capital Reserve, GML 6-C, up to $700,000 for future capital projects.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number 4, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the second reading of Policy 0105 Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education, as per Document Number 20622 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? After, if this passes, after that, it will be on our website, is that?
And it is policy.
And it will be policy, okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 5, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the proposal and appoint Nugent and Hausler, PC, as the district's internal auditors in response to RFP Number 2022 to 23 to 04.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 6, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the proposal and appointment, PKF O'Connor-Davies, on the, as the external auditors for the district as per RFP 2022-23-03.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 7, please.
Resolved to accept the bid proposal from Peak Performance, the sole bidder, in response to bid number 2022-2305, boilers and related equipment PM and repair service T and M.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. That's it, right, 7? Okay, so I'm going to invite the public to speak on any topic? Mr. Cohen?
I have two, just very quick ones. For those who weren't aware, the district met with the audit committee, and Jill knows all about it, and we have the book, and we planned the audit for the whole year, what they're going to do, and it'll be till October that they'll actually complete most of it. And so we met with them. Also, last week, the committee, CTC, the Community that Cares Committee met, and we went over what the community, Putnam Valley, and the whole county is doing with regard to drug use among adults and children, and making sure people know about what services are available, how to get ahold of them. And members of the district were there, and Matt Mello was there, and he talked about, you know, having some training in the fall for the juniors and seniors about what's going on, and there was a whole thing here, and he has that information. So that's all I just wanted to mention.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thompson, Sam, it's your last chance to speak as the public. Now you're good?
No public.
The muzzle goes on after that.
You see how well his fits, right? Okay. Upcoming meetings.
Our next meeting is July 1st, and it's a reorganization meeting, so there'll be no presentations, no reports, really just doing those mandatory reorganization things and welcoming our new board member, Sam Alareo.
At 10 o'clock here in the cafeteria?
Correct.
On Friday.
Be there, be square.
Yes.
It's a Friday.
Okay, board member comments?
I actually have a question. In, in, Jeremy, in reading the last appointment to the elementary school teacher, I was reminded of the, you must receive at least three positive APPRs. When there wasn't APPR reviews during COVID, how is that playing into the, the sequence?
So it took them a while, but the state did come around and pass legislation that allows us, if you have previously tenure, that you can, without an APPR reading, because they weren't happening for those years, that you're still allowed to have the shortened probationary period without the appropriate APPR scores. So they've sort of been granting them one year at a time, up until a point where APPR scores are again issued, in which case some show, it'll revert back to the original language. So we had a couple individuals who were, we reported, we, we passed as four-year probationary periods, and once the state passed the legislation to allow a shortened probationary period, we revised those appointments to reflect the appropriate three-year probationary period.
So we don't need to do any, is there any further action that the board needs to take as far as the way we've?
I think it's on the reorg meeting, or the? We've notified those individuals that it will be coming, it just hasn't happened yet via board resolution to change those appointments.
Okay, so after 36 emails back and forth between Corrine and I, we, one of our most important jobs is to evaluate the superintendent and to evaluate ourselves, to see how well we're doing, what can we do better, how can we improve? So I need, we need to set a date to have that discussion. So. Now, everybody's here, and I have Janine's times when she's available.
I like the way you said that, rather than the typical hire-and-fire superintendents. It sounded much nicer the way you said it.
No, well, that's true, but right now, that's not, well, it's on my focus right now. Can only focus on one thing at a time. Okay, so what are we, what are we?
What are we up to?
What are we up to?
Soon as my phone comes back on, I can tell you my calendar.
Okay, so we're up to the 23rd during the day. Some, that's next Thursday. Next Friday, I think Janine told me she was good.
You can't do phones for Tuesdays, you can't do Tuesdays.
I mean, I, I will not allow, because it's not an allowable thing, but I really would like us all in person, because I think this kind of discussion works better in person. But if we can't do it because people have, you know, other obligations, then, you know, I'm willing to do, you know, some of it by Zoom if people can't participate any other way.
So Helen, you're not available Tuesdays and Fridays, right?
Correct. Correct. Okay, so Friday's out, the 24th is out.
How about the end of the day on Wednesday, the 22nd?
So I, sorry, I have a funeral on that day, so I can't, sorry.
No.
Sorry to hear that.
So on the, on the first, if we did it the morning of, like at 8:30 before the reorganization meeting, Janine said she could attend by Zoom. If there's no other, otherwise it's like the 27th and the 29th, I think, oh, no, we can't do the 27th or the 29th, so the 28th or 30th, but I think Janine said those would have to be Zoomed for her also.
No matter what time of the day?
Hmm?
28th in the morning, that's a Tuesday, you're not available Tuesdays, right?
She said the 28th, 29th, that week, she, she could only attend by Zoom. I think she's dealing with her dad.
Afternoon of the 28th, or are you, you're not available at all on Tuesdays?
You mean like later in the afternoon?
Helen's not available on Tuesdays, so. 29th?
Imagine, you have a life, I just can't.
How about the 29th?
So we decided we can't do any of next week? Is that what we've come up to?
Next week?
Right.
Well, we, I don't, seems to be, unless it was earlier on the 23rd. Janine has something that she thought she, maybe she could move, so we could maybe do it like at 3:00 on the 23rd. She said maybe she could move, she has an appointment, but maybe she could move it.
Now, at this point, everybody was okay with the early 1st, correct?
Everybody but Janine.
And she could Zoom in.
And she could Zoom.
Then I think maybe we just kind of stick with that.
If it's like 3:30 on the 23rd, I could probably do it in person, 3:00, I probably would be same also.
Okay, let me just.
Can we do 3:30 to 4:30?
Let's see, she said I can work around most, there's, that's the 24th, wait a minute.
Dan, don't fall asleep, this is compelling. This is compelling television, folks.
I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, in the audience, this is a lovely time.
Thursday, June 23rd is best for?
Dominic, you're invited to my evaluations.
After moving up, not before.
Oh, yeah, just mail me mine.
Jeremy can't do after.
And Jeremy can't do after. She said, "We have a little retirement thing after work for someone, I'll try to change it and open up my schedule."
Well, we can't count on that.
But we can't count on that.
How about the morning of the 23rd, would that be feasible?
Sounds like she's got to be at school, at work, you know?
So keep coming back to the 1st being the best, what we have now, at 8:30 on the 1st, being the best time that she can Zoom in.
Is that okay?
So what we had.
Which is what we had. Now we're confirming.
Okay, now it's, now it's in the?
And I'm gonna try, like, when we set our meeting dates, to try to get this on the calendar, so that we can, you know, but that, I have my own issues.
Well, you know, what could have happened, it could have been part of an executive session today, but Janine wasn't here for that either, so.
Right.
That's risky, Janine.
Just, it's Paul McCartney's fault, it's actually his fault. On Super Eval, the fourth button, the consolidated, all of our comments are done and in, and you can get the consolidated thing with everybody's comments. I'd like you to pick a domain that you'd like to talk to or about, and let me know, and then, you know, we'll, we'll work it out that way, so if you let me know. And if you haven't completed the self-evaluation, I appreciate that, but if you haven't, you can still, we can still talk about it, so it doesn't, I'm not as worried about that. I'm hoping from our discussion that, that there are areas that we can work on and focus to set goals, and also with, in our August training meeting, that we can get help on really focusing, making the communication, or whatever it is that we're not doing well or could do better, you know, improve. So I'm, I want to use that, that information for that. I would like to comment, Mrs. Bellino in the consent agenda talked about donations, and I have to say, the district gets tremendous support from, from all kinds of people. We've gotten donations of instruments, equipment, time, expertise, and money. The community is really generous, and we are always grateful for, when the community reaches out, ex-students, you know, like when Dominic becomes senator, he will come and present.
I'll definitely come for a meeting. Don't duck that.
So I, I want to thank anybody that's ever made a donation of anything, because we do appreciate everything. So I agree with Dr. Love, senior awards were amazing, but the 9th, 10th, and 11th grade awards were also so positive, to see students cheering on their classmates, and, classmates being recognized for outstanding excellence in, in their, in their educational journey, so, great. The 5th and 6th grade band concert last night was great. I missed the 7th and 8th, because I went to a PTA meeting, and I can only do one thing. I was really impressed with the 5th and 6th grade jazz band. I was like, these little tiny kids playing jazz, I shouldn't say that, they will be insulted. They aren't little tiny kids, they're young people playing jazz and having a great time. The drumming and the piano and all the other instruments, the trumpets, oh my gosh, it was excellent. And then the 5th grade band, and then the 6th grade pan, band, Jocelyn did an amazing job, a lot of variety in music. The PTA meeting, I think there were five or six of us. I, I have to say, the PTAs worked really hard this year to bring programs to every grade and every building, but it's two or three people doing all of the work, and they're literally burning out. And I, I've talked to people who say, "Well, you know, I don't, I don't really want to get involved with the PTA." Like, why? It's parents and teachers working for students, and they can't do it alone. And a lot of the really great programs that they run can't run if you don't have people to step up. So, you know, I'm encouraging anybody who, come September, watch for those notices, come to a meeting and volunteer a little bit, just, just to do a little bit, take a little bit of the load off the, your PTA officers. I think that's all I want to say. Anybody else?
Thank you.
We're good?
Looking forward to graduation.
Yeah, oh, exciting. And then 4th grade moving up, and then 8th grade grad moving up. Anyway, it's an exciting time. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
No.
No?
No, we have to go back into executive session, and be adjourned from executive session.
Okay, so I need a motion to go back into executive session for two matters of the employment history of a particular person.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Enjoy your summer, folks.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.